I'm late.
Just on time. Ta-da, we can start meeting now. All right. Planning board will come to order.
And. Hang on one second, I gotta do some work here.
Okay.
Oh, somebody already did it, never mind.
All right. Um, where's Matt?
I'm here.
Okay. All right. For a motion on the meeting minutes of May 18th.
Move to accept and file.
Yeah, ask for one very small edit.
Yes.
On that paragraph five on the subdivision progress reports, unquoted as commenting on blasting from the site. I don't know that there actually has been any blasting, there's just power jackhammer.
Okay.
That was what my concern was, it might as well have been blasting, but I don't think it really was.
Thank you, I'll make note.
Okay, so.
With that, I'll second the motion.
Okay, is it okay with you for the corrections?
With the amendment, yeah.
Okay, all right, so. We'll go through our list of people in favor.
Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes, please.
And Mr. Hodge votes yes, please. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby.
Yes.
And Dr. Fendby votes yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Chair's business. We have to set a public hearing regarding stone wall. People on Stowe Road want to replace the stone wall. And so we have jurisdiction that's in the right of way and was also on an approved plan. So how about July 20th for that? That'll give us plenty of time to notify everybody because we've got to notify Conservation and Historical Commission and everybody else. So, that work for you, Krista?
Yes.
So, everybody else okay with that?
Yep.
That's fine.
All right, next we come to A and Rs. And first is 2634 McQuarrie Drive. And we have some information from the engineering department.
All right. Hi, Dr. Fendby, pursuant to the request from the planning board. Our office has reviewed the following plan, which proposes to create a small triangular parcel of land to be sold to the abutting property in order to eliminate an existing encroachment of the driveway for 26 McQuarrie Drive. The purpose of the plan is to modify the property line between two lots on McQuarrie Drive. Lot 15, map 67, parcel 93, 34 McQuarrie Drive, containing 28,459 square feet, 1.53 plus or minus acres, and having 120 feet of frontage on the drive. Lot 16, map 67, parcel 92, 26 McQuarrie Drive, containing 54,768 square feet, 1.257 plus or minus acres, and have a total of 120, 0.01 feet of frontage on the drive. 142 square foot parcel located at the property corner of Lot 16, the plan is parcel 16A. Will be subtracted from Lot 16, creating Lot 16B, containing 28,317 square feet, 0.65 plus or minus acres, and adding to Lot 15, creating Lot 15B, containing 54,910 square feet, 1.261 plus or minus acres. Has the lots of adequate area and frontage and have present adequate access for buildable lot in residence K2 zone. In 1976, when these lots were initially created, Lot 15, Lot 16 met the requirements for lot width and the lot depth. The lot width and the lot depth requirements were repealed on January 23rd, 1989, and replaced with the current lot shape. Lot 16 makes requirements of lot width and lot shape and also meets the current lot shape requirement for the lot located in the residence K2 zone. Lot 15B is compliant with lot width and depth requirements for residence K2 zone. The additional 142 square foot parcel zone is parcel 16A, when deeded to the owners of 26 McQuarrie Drive, will make the existing driveway for 26 McQuarrie Drive with the driveway property line setback requirement of five feet. Should you have questions, please don't hesitate, contact me, Timothy F. Collins, Assistant City Engineer.
I'll have a motion to accept and file and to endorse the plan.
Almost.
Do you have a second?
For a second.
Okay.
I didn't hear who made the motion.
Was.
Yeah, I had said, but.
George.
Okay. All right, let's go through the roll call.
Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge.
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ.
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby.
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
All right, plan is endorsed. Next, we have another A and R, and this is Simarano Drive at Cedar Hill. And is somebody here to chat with us about this?
Barbara. That was John Shike, who you met before the meeting.
Yeah, he wants to move along.
Request to move on to the next matter and will come back because he's in two meetings simultaneously.
All right. If there's no objection, we will move this further down the agenda, come back to it later. Hearing no objection, we will move it down until Mr. Shike returns. Next, we have a continuation of the public hearing. And in accordance with Chapter 41A, Section 81T of the Massachusetts General Law, hereby declare this public meeting reopened. And are there people here from the public for this meeting?
George, would you like to read the notice into the record?
The public hearing notice, I will. Public hearing notice, revised application for approval for a derivative subdivision plan of 3-2.20 Commonwealth Heights is notice published in accordance with the provision of Subdivision Control Law, MGL Chapter 41, Section 81T. Location, 26 acres located on the corner of Forest Street and Ames Street Property recorded in Worldsex South Registry of Dees Book 31932, page 4414. Revised plan consists of 21 residential plots, or actually two lots.
All right, is there somebody who wishes to discuss this changed plan with us?
Hi, yes, this is Scott Weiss from the Gutierrez.
Yes.
Not sure if you want to hear from me yet, or?
Yes, why don't you tell us what the changes are?
Sure, if you may recall, we had submitted a an application for the 23-lot subdivision known as Commonwealth Heights off of Ames Street and Forest Street. Previously, we had held a public hearing, had some discussion back and forth about, about, there it is on the screen, about the project as it was proposed at that time. There was some feedback and direction to look into additional buffering to the neighbors, some screening, and to update some plans per the, per the engineering department, and lastly, a soil management plan, all of which have been provided. We did provide a revised set of plans, shortening the length of the cul-de-sac road by a little bit over 100 feet, reducing the number of lots from 23 lots to 22, excuse me, 21, to 21 lots, lost two lots, all to create a little bit of additional buffer zone and to allow for some soil management area as well per the soil management plan. So, the plan you have before you shows, shows the revised layout. And Krista?
Yes, do you want the other drawn?
Yeah, I don't know if I can share my screen, or if you have that other plan, it gives a good visual aerial.
Just a second.
Okay.
Now, you're still asking for waivers, is that correct?
Yep, and I can go through the two waivers as well that we're requesting. The waivers are essentially the same waivers that were previously requested. One is for the length of the cul-de-sac, albeit it's a shorter request from 1,072 feet to a total length of 964 or so feet. And we are still proposing an emergency access connection to Forest Street as previously shown, that would be gated and emergency access only, and that would make the cul-de-sac length well within the 500 feet. The dead-end cul-de-sac will within the 500 feet. The image that.
Where is that on the map? Here?
It is not actually identified on this plan, we can go back to the subdivision plan in just a moment to look at that, but if we stay with this for a moment, you can see the red outline was the length of the cul-de-sac as originally submitted, and the yellow outline is the subdivision road in the same location as before, just shortened up, so that it would eliminate, as I mentioned, a little bit more than 110 feet or so. It, it creates the end of the cul-de-sac, which is closest to the, the homes. And in the former red area, we have a parcel of land back there that would not be built upon, that would remain buffer, and would be kept as an open space parcel at that location. The, so that, that's the request for the length of the cul-de-sac. Krista, if you could switch back to the overall submittal engineered plan that will show the location of the emergency access connection, which remains the same as we had previously discussed and reviewed. So, yep, that, Krista is running over it right now with her cursor. That is the location of the emergency access drive connection. The other waiver request that we have submitted, again, is the same as previously discussed, would be allowed, would be to allow for a, a narrower roadway width and staggering of trees similar to another subdivision approved recently, approved and built recently in Marlboro. I think it's referred to as Marlboro Farms, which allows for a, a planting strip between the roadway and the sidewalk, and, and gives a more pleasant layout for the, for the roadway itself. So, I can go into the details of the sidewalk width and the waiver request there. So, it reduces the roadway width from 32 feet to 28 feet, provides the two grass strips on either side in between the road and a five-foot sidewalk, and the street, and the street trees would be staggered. One in the grass strip and one behind, and it would alternate that way up, up and down the road. So, that is the second waiver request to allow that, that geometry. Those are the two waiver requests, same request as before, and what we've come back with here to reflect and reflect the board's wishes to be responsive to the neighborhood, is to allow for the increased buffer and to shorten the cul-de-sac road.
Thank you. All right. Have we anybody attending the public meeting from the public? So, anybody in the public?
Yes.
We, we do have a comment from, an email comment from someone that's a local resident.
Okay, do you want to read that into the record then?
I will, and we do have some other correspondence as well related, so. This is from Dana Mcfee, comments regarding Commonwealth Heights definitive subdivision, excuse me. My husband and I live at 33 Flynn Ave Marlboro, here are my comments regarding Commonwealth Heights subdivision. One, why is this being allowed before there's a plan for a fire station on this side of town? Safety of town residents is being put into jeopardy, this is proved before the town infrastructure exists to support these additional families. Two, my neighborhood is already a cut-through for so many. How are you going to handle additional traffic in the neighborhood as a result of more people in the area? Speed limits are not posted, there's no signage mentioned, thickly settled area. Can this be remedied before building more? Three, the no-enter sign on Forest Street leading the Sandini Road is already not obeyed. What are your plans for this? Four, excuse me, how will this affect the overcrowded schools? The new elementary school that was just built is already a capacity. Back to point one, how can you approve this without the infrastructure to support these families? Five, Forest Street is a parking lot at school times as a result of AMSA. How do you plan to deal with that, with more houses in the area and people pulling out in the Forest Street from this development? Six, in the proposed map, it appears that Glen Street is now going through to Ames Street. Is that a plan light? It will be impossible to get out there without one. Seven, if Glen Street is going to go straight through, how will you control the speed of drivers? There's a single posted speed sign that's too fast, to be honest, and no one ever enforces there. Will speed bumps put in place to make sure our children are safe? Eight, the economy is likely going into a downturn because of COVID-19. This seems to be especially bad time to build houses that you cannot guarantee will be purchased. Nine, what is the proposed cost of these houses? Ten, this neighborhood has been dealing with five years of construction because of Apex, the current Avalon development going in, and now possibly this. We have dirty runoff coming from Avalon, we will have even more coming from this development. It is unfair to the residents of this community to deal with the noise and the pollution created by this potential development. Sincerely, Dana Mcfee and Jacob Ratliff.
Okay. Many of those don't pertain to things within the jurisdiction of the planning board. We can possibly answer the cost of the houses, can the developer give us a clue about that?
While the houses aren't designed yet, we would anticipate they are similar to, you know, some other houses in the area, these are not huge lots, they're not intended to be McMansions, they're supposed, they're intended to be more affordable, probably 350 to 550 type range for, for housing, but again, until, you know, the, but her neighbor gives a, makes a good point, until we kind of have an idea what the market is, we would build to what, you know, the demand is for the housing in the area.
Thank you. Okay. Any other board members like to comment on, or councillors like to report on the comment on the letter? Comment on the letter, any comments on the letter?
Chair Fendby.
I'm chair. Madam Chair, this is Tom, I just have a comment on the letter, if I could.
Yep.
There seems to be a misconception about the project that it's proposing a connection from Glen Street to Ames Street, and that's, that's not correct. There's no, there's no proposed change to the end of Glen Street as a cul-de-sac, so there'd be no connection there as, as on.
Yeah, I was wondering how we can get appropriate feedback to the letter writer? And shall we go through the city councillor?
We're actually here on this call.
Oh, all right, okay.
I said something before, but, before you started reading the letter, but I don't think anyone heard me.
That's correct, we didn't.
So, you couldn't tell on the picture that we were sent, on the plans that we were sent, that Glen Street wasn't going to go through, so that's helpful to know, thank you.
Yes.
Can I ask one additional question?
Yes.
How long is this project intended to take to complete?
How, Scott, could you comment on that?
Sure, from, from start to finish, to build the road would probably take a year and a half or so, it could be done more quickly depending on what time of the year it starts and whether or not it goes through a construction season. But the build-out of each individual house lot will depend on the timing and the activity, as you, as you noted, how, how many buyers there are for the houses. So, we wouldn't build all the houses and leave them sitting there empty, they would be built as, as there was interest and demand for them.
Thank you.
Okay, and many of the other things you raised comments on are not within the jurisdiction of the planning board, as I said. Traffic and things like that are not our jurisdiction, so we can have your city councillor get in touch with you if that would help clarify things.
That would be great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do you have anything else, George?
We've got correspondence from the Conservation Commission, from the Fire Chief as well. So, with the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission is receipt of and having reviewed the following documents, definitive plan, Plan of Land at Commonwealth Heights in Marlboro dated October 24, 2019, last revised March 2nd, 2020, Sheets 1 of 2 and 1 of 10, prepared by Cornerstone Engineering, Soil Management Plan Commonwealth Health Subdivision Forest and Ames Street Marlboro, Mass., prepared for Marlboro North World Land Realty Trust, April 24, 2020. The following are our comments, there are no wetlands near this project, therefore no wetland permits are required. Two, this property falls within the city's Water Supply Protection District, therefore all designs for stormwater runoff must meet the higher TSS removal requirements. Three, this property was a formal April orchard, and as such, the topsoil in the site must be managed properly to protect public health. I reviewed the Soil Management Plan prepared by Sandborn Head dated April 24, 2020. The plan includes requirements for proper soil management, air monitoring, testing, and final disposal on-site of materials excavated. I have a few questions which should be resolved prior to construction, which are as follows. A, on page seven of the plan, it indicates the piles of topsoil left for more than two weeks shall be stabilized. We would request that these piles be covered to avoid airborne dust, and once the soil is stripped, it should be placed in the disposal area right away. B, the Health and Safety Plan noted on page nine, item two, shall also be submitted to the Board of Health Directors, City Engineer, and Conservation Officer prior to the pre-construction meeting on the site, and shall be reviewed at the pre-construction meeting. C, as noted, a deed restriction will be included on the impacted soil disposal areas shown on the plans as lots eight and parcel 9-10. Who will ultimately own these parcels and how do we ensure this deed language is properly recorded? Four, in addition, under Section MGL 53G, we would recommend, planning board also require that the applicant pay the city for the services and outside consultant, LSP, to advise the city and provide some technical assistance on the plan review and review of construction of this project as it relates to dust and air quality monitoring. The hazard related to these residual contaminants in the soil is that they are bound to the soil, so pose a threat when they become airborne. Attached are sample conditions required by the Conservation Commission for both Talia on Ames Street site and the Apex Center project. These conditions may be useful to incorporate in some fashion into any planning board decisions as this project will not require a wetland permit or a site plan permit. Five, as noted in our comments in December 2019, the soils on this property are glacial till with a very, very high clay content. During the initial construction of the roadway under previous ownership, the city issued numerous violation notices and stop work orders due to the issues with muddy water leaving the site on Glen Street and down on Conrad Road and Teller Road. Most rain events sent mud into these neighborhood yards. Yeah, can a contractor hired to work this site needs to be aware of these extremely difficult soil conditions? The erosion control plan in the plan set six of 10 should include the following. A, riser pipes in the detention basin to ensure proper settling on prior to discharge. B, construction sequencing to ensure that the entire site is not stripped open at the same time. C, use of stump grindings, woodchips, compost stocks, settling backer tanks, flock logs, or other erosion control methods internal to the site in addition to the perimeter erosion controls to help slow down runoff velocities and control the silt. The other sites in the area have had to employ numerous erosion control trains to clean the silty water before discharge to the drainage system. Note seven, references 2016 Soil Management Plan, this should be updated to reflect the 2020 plan. Six, in addition, we would recommend that a site be required to hire an erosion control consultant approved by the city engineer. This consultant would oversee the construction of the site and direct contractor to ensure that the site remains under control. I have attached language that we normally use in our conservation and site plan permits, which I would recommend also be incorporated into any planning board decision as well if you find them appropriate. If you have any questions, please let me know. I now have a page of sample conditions, if you'd like me to continue.
No, I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
People, in seeing that, they can request a copy of it from Krista home.
And we have an email from the Fire Chief. Subject Commonwealth Heights, 23-lot subdivision near Ames Street. Good morning, I wish to respond to inquiries regarding the multiple-lot subdivision posed off Ames Street between Wolf Street and Forest Street. Marlboro Fire Department is indifferent to any excess egress road between the proposed cul-de-sac and Forest Street. We defer to other departments with respect to the utility easement, but wish to convey we do not require emergency access over this easement. Thank you, Kevin J. Breen, Fire Chief.
Okay. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment from the public? Anybody else from the public?
Yes, this is John Sawyer, I'm at 33 Teller Street. I was looking at the plan there and the concern that was brought up.
Could you put, hold on a second, could you spell your last name for us, please?
Sure, it's Sawyer, S-A-W-Y-E-R.
Thank you.
My concern was, the updated plan, it shows a arbor screen, which is, I'm taking a row of bushes or trees or some, something along the, what's the existing rock wall that is on the backside of the properties from Sandini and Teller. My concern with that is it looks from the plans that it's, it's right up against an existing rock wall, and I'm assuming, my assumption is that in order to plant those, you'd have to clear that land as well. Well, as we've talked about, and everybody's aware of the drainage problems that we have there, now this, since 2007, we have 13 years of growth that's, that's existing there. I like the idea of the screening, obviously, with adding, adding more, more trees and in order to soak up some of this runoff is obviously going to help. So, clearing that already existing, you know, growth is a concern to me, and it puts it right in our backyard, all this dust and all these things that we're talking about. Is there a possibility of moving those, that screen back some?
Okay, thank you for the comment, certainly is something that we look at when the engineer has the plan.
Okay.
My name is Marguerite Sawyer, I'm at 33 Teller as well.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I just had, I just had a question, because of the last meeting, I had asked who the contractor would be, as the other contractor we know was not very well equipped to handle it, and they did not have a contractor at that time, do they now have a contractor that's supposed to be building these homes?
Not at this point, is my understanding.
That's, that's correct.
This is John again, I have another question. And we got to the email.
If you've got a question, you have to identify yourself with your name and address.
I'm sorry, it's John Sawyer again. 33 Teller.
Thank you.
Listening to the email brought up questions about, talking about the traffic from the charter school along Forest, and she's absolutely right about that. And, you know, it was mentioned that it's not a concern of the planning board, however, isn't something like that to be considered throughout the planning board when looking at an approval for a parcel like this?
We will usually ask for a traffic study.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to comment? Anybody else wishing to comment?
Yes, this is, this is Dana Mcfee, 33 Flynn, have you asked for that traffic study? Has that been completed?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
All right, anything else? Anything else, hearing anything else? Hearing nothing else, we'll close that part of the public hearing. Is there anybody from the city council who'd like to make comments? Questions or comments from the city council? Questions or comments from the planning board members? Okay.
I have one, Dr. Fennby.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Weiss, this is, I think, a fair compromise from what we talked about before. There's some work we need to do, obviously incorporating some comments from Conservation and a few other things from the public hearing. I just want to reiterate my concern with this project, and that is that we're not going to see progress. And I just want to make sure that every time this comes up, that I'm clear that without any progress, there won't be any extensions. So if we're, you know, we expect a construction schedule that's realistic, that you're going to stick to no matter what happens, and I would not support at all any extensions without progress in keeping with the construction schedule.
And I second that thought, Mr. Fay.
Yeah, we've been pretty clear about that, and I think, Mr. Weiss, do you understand that?
You've been very clear, and I understand the message, yes. It has not changed.
For engineering, would it be useful for us to consider the waivers so that you know what you have to deal with, or does that not matter at this point?
Actually, yeah, it would be a good idea. It would just provide some clarity in finalizing the review and what, you know, what exactly it is we should make our final comments on. And for your consideration, as we've discussed before, I think, engineering is in favor of, or at least doesn't have an issue with the revised cross-section, like, nor do we have an issue with shortening the road. I think that's an improvement.
Definitely an improvement. Okay. All right, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment at this point? If not, we will adjourn the public hearing until the next meeting.
There's one little thing that I want to...
Sure, Chris.
It's in regards to the screening trees. Right now, they're just little dots with arboritey. If we could have some sort of quantification of how many trees per feet that is, right now it looks like there's maybe one every 10 feet, but just have a little bit of definition on that. And then to sort of echo the conservation notes, the plan as shown right now doesn't have much erosion control in the lots, as is other, I mean, they did add our swell in, but they don't have any other additional, or at least can't quite see it on this plan right now, erosion control along the property lines for construction.
All right, got that, Scott? Did you hear that, Scott?
Yes, I do. Had to find my unmute button.
Okay. All right. If there's no objection from the planning board members, we will adjourn this meeting until the 22nd, our next public meeting. Okay. Next up is the person returned for the A and R.
I don't believe so.
Subdivision progress report, Gooddale Estates.
Kevin Gillis, present for Northborough, hopefully.
All right, so what are you asking for us at this point?
Okay, on my request, there are four items. I'm going to start with the last one, which is the natural gas line, and since I made the request, we've been able to sort out a relocated place for that line, and I have an approval from the engineering department, which has been submitted to Natural Grid, sorry, Eversource. I fail to anticipate the delay that Eversource incurred with regard to processing these things. So many of the parts that are remaining on the project, the finished pavement, the pouring of the sidewalk, and the installation of the trees is probably going to be delayed until I hear back from Eversource, which might be four, five, six weeks. Plenty of time to get this done this season, I think. But in the meanwhile, I'll go back to the items in which they appear in the letter, and the first being the extension of the approval, which otherwise expires on June 30 of this 2020, and we're requesting a six-month extension.
Go ahead.
Well, the bond is in place and does not expire until December 31st. I am requesting a reduction in that bond based on the schedule that I sent in. There's actually, at this point, more of that has been completed, but the reduction would be to $207,000. That doesn't affect anything at this point, because I've already paid a premium, and the premium is a minimum earned for the entire year, but I'd still like to get the amount of the bond reduced, and then next time I come before you, I'll simply follow the format that I presented here and reduce it accordingly, in case it needs to be renewed beyond the end of the year. And lastly, is item three on there, which are the trees. The plan calls for trees to be installed about five feet within the right-of-way on the actual lots, and there to be every 40 feet the entire length of Jenks Way, which I assume is up one side, around the cul-de-sac, and down the other. The northerly, I'm sorry, the southerly side of Jenks Lane, due to the grade and the tight width, probably won't accommodate trees. They just might not be necessary as well, because there are other trees in place. And I'd really just like to work, I guess, with the engineer on site after we have walked this site and looked at it to determine where the trees need to be, and I'll put them in wherever it'd like them.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board members? We had questions about the jackhammer, did you want to go into that?
Doesn't seem to have been as much of a problem since we talked about it last time. They've moved beyond that stage.
Is there anybody else who wishes to ask any questions? Yeah.
I was out at the site today, and I presume the area that we're talking about, the trees having a hard time being installed, or right along, there's a retaining wall and a sidewalk. Along that area, there is quite a bit of exposure to the neighboring house, so I think it would be important to figure out if the trees can't be on top of that retaining wall, if we could put them somewhere to help that neighboring house not have so much exposure to development.
I'm happy to talk to the engineering department about that after they've looked at it. If they'd rather have shrubs, that would be fine with me.
Or, I mean, neighborly thing is, can you plant them down alongside the wall on their property, or anything like that to sort of be a nice neighbor versus some shrubs that may not make it on top of the wall anyways, because they'll get baked out from heating of the wall?
I'm happy to discuss that.
Okay, so that's on your list, looks like, Tom. All right, I will have a motion to accept and file all the correspondence and to refer this to engineering. So that's a second from George, and it's Chris with the motion. So now you can go through the attendants again.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fennby?
Yes.
Yeah, Dr. Fennby votes yes.
So it would be good if we could get this back for our next meeting, Tom. All right.
I have some thoughts on it too, so we'll report back at the next meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, a quick question for you, back to the Commonwealth, did we have to do anything? Do we have to refer this final version, or this updated version of the plan to any of the change recommendations? Do we need a vote to refer anything back to engineering, or are we all set with what we've discussed?
Do you need a referral from us, Tom, since it was presented at the public meeting? Doesn't it go directly to you?
No, we plan to review, but again, is the board planning to vote on the waivers or discuss the waivers?
Yes, at the end of the meeting, yeah.
Okay, okay, fine.
All right, has the A and R reappeared? All right, next we have...
We do have Mr. Scheibes here.
Oh, all right.
I do see him. One moment while I queue up the traffic.
Thank you again for your patience, I appreciate it. Anybody hear me okay?
Sure.
Thanks. Would you like me to start?
Yes, please.
Do you see the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
So my name is John Scheibes, and I'm a civil engineer, and I actually am not, I'm here on behalf of Post Road Residential as a development consultant. I've worked with Andy Montelli of Post Road Residential for 20 years. If you look at the screen right now, the building's on the far right, just off Locust. I was with Rizzo Associates when we designed that project 20 years ago, so this is a neat thing for me, and it's interesting for me as I've gotten older and seen the development in this area. And Andy Montelli was also with Fairfield Residential back 20 years ago, so I've known Andy for many years. This particular property, I'll get right to the quick here, this is, you know, 45 or 50 acres parcel that's owned by Boston Properties, and I think you probably know it was approved, oh, maybe in 1995, for 650,000 square feet of office building, and that never happened, and the Boston, the office market kind of fell through. So Andy looked at this property and secured this executive residential overlay district. The zoning was changed about a year ago, and then he went through all the required city council approvals for a new residential development. What you're looking at is the need to subdivide the properties predominantly for financing purposes, because they're, you know, they're in 10 plus or minus acre chunks. So Andy intends to develop one property and then move on to the next property and may return, you know, for other projects in the future. The bottom line, this is a subdivision of the 48 acres into parcels that all comply and exactly as the executive residential overlay district was contemplated. So it meets all of the lot area shape, frontage necessary. And thank you to Mr. Collins, who provided some comments early on. There was a tweak that we made, because the underlying district would render a particular lot there, Lot 2, as non-buildable, and we've made a note of that, no problem. So I think that's, I can talk a little bit more if you'd like, and talk about how I'm going to Southborough as well, but rather than that, I'll just answer any questions if you'd like.
Okay, do board members have any questions on this? Any questions? We're familiar with it, we've seen it. All right, hearing none, I'll accept the motion to refer this to engineering.
So move.
Second.
Go for it, George.
All righty. Mr. Elder?
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fennby?
Yes.
Dr. Fennby votes yes.
All right, so we'll be going to engineering. Thank you very much, Mr. Scheibes.
Thank you very much, everybody, have a good evening.
We're now down to number seven, 68 123 Broad Street, four lot subdivision, a presentation.
All right, we have a email for Broad Street.
Yeah.
Let's see. Property of 76 Broad Street area equals 1.86 plus or minus acres, intends to create a four lot subdivision with a new dead-end right-of-way connected to Broad Street with no waiver. Please refer to the presentation plan. One, the existing houses 76 Broad Street will be demolished to create the proposed right-of-way. Two, the owner has reached an agreement with the abudders at number 72 Broad to the south and number 84 Broad to the north to swap property areas in order to create the 50-foot wide right-of-way. The property swaps will create additional frontage for the abutting properties. Three, the existing driveways for the abutting properties will be removed. New driveways for these properties will be constructed off the proposed right-of-way. Four, the proposed right-of-way intersection requires 30-foot roundings. Two easements will be required to create the rounding. Five, the 76 property is zone residential C. Within the proposed subdivision, all four lots, the right-of-way setbacks and street layout will conform to Marlboro zoning bylaws, subdivision rules and regulations. Six, the abutting properties are zone residential C and are existing non-conforming lots. The proposed right-of-way property swaps and easements will not increase the non-conformance of these lots. Robert M. Di Benedetto, P.E., Project Manager, Hancock Associates.
And who is here to discuss this for us?
I'm here, I'm Robert Di Benedetto with Hancock.
And I'm here, Gary White from WRE LLC.
And why are you asking for an informal discussion?
We believe that the presentation plan we submitted there is fully compliant with the rules and regulations from the subdivision rules and with the zoning bylaws. We wanted to get your thoughts on the right-of-way easements. It's our understanding with what we've read that we are in compliance by requesting a right-of-way easement for the two abutting lots in order to create the right-of-way. We had a previous discussion with Tom De Perzio and with Krista Holme. It was suggested that we bring it to an informal meeting to get your thoughts on this.
Dr. Fennby, can I address this?
Yes.
So we just had this issue with another subdivision in Marlboro Hub, and I don't recall what the outcome was, but I just want to make sure that Mr. Di Benedetto knows our policy when we have a novel issue like this. We don't refer this to our legal department, it is up to the proponent to establish for us that you do in fact have the right to do it. So either through you or a council, you give us the regulation or the case that tells us that you have the right to do it prior to us getting an opinion from our legal departments. We want you to do the work for your project, as opposed to our legal department doing the work for your project.
Okay.
So the answer to your question is, I don't remember, and I don't know if you can do that or not, but we need you to establish for us that you have the authority to do it.
Which also, which also means you're not going to get any indication from the board, yea or nay, because we need you to do some more work. because we need you to do some more work.
Okay. I could just jump in.
Yeah, sure.
Tom, just hang on one second. So this, to the other statements that you made, my position is on them is, I mean, it sounds like a reasonable position, but I don't think that in an informal discussion where the board is in a position to give you a definitive answer as to whether or not we agree with you without seeing more.
So if, just so I can play this out here, if we're reviewing the rules and regulations and the zoning bylaws and we come across no verbiage that says for or against right of way easements, we would still like to make the determination that we are therefore allowed to do so because there's nothing telling us that we cannot. If we come back with that determination, then we can then get a decision from the planning board through another informal meeting or some other specific request?
No, we would then refer, go ahead, Sean.
So your decision comes after a public hearing. You know, depending on how you want to file it, I mean, we can give you a sense of the board, but that's really all that it is. But we're, I mean, certainly I wouldn't feel comfortable doing that, just reading, you know, six bullet points in an email and looking at a concept plan. We've seen this property at least once before in the past, you know, 15 years. So, and there were hurdles to developing it before. So and as far as the conclusion that if there's no prohibition in the rules and regulations that gives you the right to do it, I'm not sure I would agree with that statement.
Okay.
And I would just add, Sean, since Robert mentioned that we did speak. So the question that was posed to me was not whether legally they could have the right of way being an easement, which I agree with you is something they need to prove to the board.
Right.
The question, the question was, since the applicant's desire was to have a plan that didn't have any waiver requests, was, would that be a waiver request? That was really what I understood to be the question. And, you know, maybe that's also something they need to get an opinion on. My initial thought to him was that it would appear that it would be a waiver request. You know, in terms of legally whether they can do it, you know, I think I've seen other cases where it's been done in other places, but you know, like you said, that's something they need to present to you. But then there's also the question, which I don't know if it's a simpler question or not, but would that be a waiver request? You know, if it can be legally done and they want to do it, would that constitute a request for a waiver?
Thank you, Tom, I agree with that, with your characterization of that. And, you know, just for Mr. Di Benedetto's, I don't remember seeing you, maybe I don't have a great memory. I don't remember you seeing you at the board meetings before, but we don't, you waiver requests are always in a negative light if it lessens the impact on the neighbor. So, you know, keep that in mind if you have something that you can do with this project to lessen the impact on the neighbors in the form of a waiver request. We certainly would be willing to have that discussion with you.
Okay. That's good to hear. Then will I make an additional presentation to you? Whether it's, we'll discuss if we're going to be doing that through a formal hearing or maybe another informal discussion, but you'll get some more information.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody else on the board like to ask your comment at all? Okay, thank you very much. We're moving now, moving on to signs. 431 Lincoln Street, do we have somebody here to talk about that?
Steve Pedro with A U B Engineering, can everyone hear me?
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the?
Yes, please.
The correspondence, okay, two pieces of correspondence, one from codes and one an email from a resident. Let's see, re-sign denial letter at 431 Lincoln Street. On 7/9/2019, it was noted that a sign permit was applied for relating to the installation of electronic message signage on a byline sign at the golf station located at 431 Lincoln Street. This would be an incorrect use of general city code 526-13. In addition to a special permit, planning board relief is required for all electronic message center signs that are located within 200 feet of a residentially zoned district. And then it goes on, 526-13 electronic message center sign, digital display signs, standards, E M A C signs and digital display signs shall be allowed by special permit but only pursuant to the following standards. 12, setbacks from residential zoned areas, the sign must be set back minimum distance of 200 feet from the nearest point of any abutting residentially zoned district. If because of the shape, size and/or proximity of a commercial lot to a residentially zoned district is not possible to place the sign more than 200 feet from the nearest point of an abutting residentially zoned district, then the planning board may grant a variance for closer placement provided that when location within 200 feet of a residentially zoned district, all digital display portions of the sign shall be oriented so that no portion of the sign is visible from an existing primary residential structure in that district. I didn't realize my reading had that effect. Read email now or Madam Chair, do you want me to wait on that?
Email from Melissa Pelletier?
Yes.
It came in after comments were due. I think that I would prefer that we have a chance to distribute that to the board and we're not going to make a decision on this tonight anyway, so we can, since it came in late, let's distribute it for the next meeting. Yes. All right, so you are here because you want what from us, sir?
We are looking for a variance from the 200 foot setback required for a message board. We are looking to reface the existing sign structure to include a LED price panels for regular gasoline and diesel. And with that, we got a denial letter from the building commissioner stating that the first step would be a variance required. We're looking again to reuse the existing sign, just to change out the price panels to a LED. And the definition of the price panels is essentially a message board, which requires the 200 feet. The setback, the existing residential line is 200, essentially 200 feet along Lincoln Street, behind, from the front of the station to beyond. The sign is located at the corner, the southwest corner of the site. Across the street, there's a 100 foot district line to residential. So there's no way to relocate the sign or have the sign located on the site that complies with a 200 foot setback to the residential districts.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Fenby?
Yes.
I just wanted to, you know, I absolutely loathe dealing with sign variance requests. And I would love to find a way to get the city council to take it off our hands. But I don't, I don't know that we have the authority to grant the variance in this circumstance because of the language that says that when located within 200 feet of a residential zoned district, all digital display portions of the sign should be oriented so that no portion of the sign is visible from an existing primary residential structure. So there is a residential structure at the corner on the south side, on the corner of Lincoln and Pleasant Street. There are two residential dwellings that abut Pleasant Place. So I don't see how there's any orientation of the sign that would prevent that from being visible from those residential structures. And I think granting the variance would be, if we granted the variance, it would be an excess of our authority.
Okay. Let's, do you want to ask for a meeting on that from legal or? My suggestion was going to be that everybody take a chance to go down and take a look at this sign. And since we have objections from abutters and nearby residents, that the sign is too, there's too much light in this section anyway. Please go by during nighttime if you can, so you can best evaluate what the request has to do with the objections we've got. We're not going to make a decision tonight, sir?
I understand.
We're going to give the board members a chance to take a look, see. Did you want to ask legal about our jurisdiction here or not, Sean?
Well, I mean, I don't know that we need to, I think the language is pretty clear unless I'm misreading what Ethan sent over.
All right. Okay. So.
If I could just ask too, that it's extremely hard to kind of picture this also without a site plan. Doesn't have to be anything too overwhelming, but just kind of give us a decent, are these buildings within 50 feet? 200 feet, what are, just kind of give us a reference point of how close these buildings are.
I don't know if you can see this, this plan.
Could we ask that you provide that to the planning board so that we can have it for our next meeting?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
Most definitely. I guess in light of the position of the board at this time, I guess I'd be requesting a continuance.
No, we're on the continuance.
Oh, okay. And I'll provide some additional information relative to site plan and residential structures in terms of sightlines.
Yeah. Yeah, distance arcs on your plan are good for us to be able to see where that 200 foot minimum distance is going to lie. So if you could have that distance circle on there as well, that would be great.
Will do. One question, in terms of the zoning district line, is it taken from the center line of the roadways? Because it's identified as 100 feet and 200 feet, but I'm not sure if it's 100 feet from the edge of the right of way or 100 feet from the center line of the roadway.
Tom? We'll ask that you take that up with engineering.
Will do.
All right, I'm here, it's from the center line of the road.
It is, okay. So I'll put together a plan that identifies where the residential district boundaries are and which residential structures within that would have any sightline to the sign.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments?
Can we just take, I just want to, if we wouldn't mind just taking a minute and pull the G I S data up for this property and see if I'm incorrect about the distance from these, the distance from these houses. It probably would just take a second, I'm actually pulling it up right now.
Oh, okay, if you can share it, because.
Okay. I'll try, this is 431 Lincoln.
Correct.
Yes.
All right, so I just need to figure out how to share my, I don't know, I'm not sure I know how to do this, Krista, without showing you everything else that's on my unlined desktop.
Sean?
Yes.
Do you have this icon, the screen with the share?
Yeah, I just want to, I just need to close out some confidential client data first just to make sure I don't accidentally share the shared things, just bear with me.
But I'm not sure that I, I'm getting, I'm not on my own machine, I'll see if I can do it.
I can, I can do it, I just want to, I just want to make sure that I'm not sharing things I shouldn't, so. Just bear with me for one second. All right, all right, I think I can do it now.
You're a brave guy, go, Sean.
Okay, sorry, Krista, how do I do it?
All right, I'm just trying, I'm pulling that myself.
So I have the G I S data up on my, okay, I see the share button. Oh, I can pick what I share, that's even better, okay.
Right.
All right.
Are you already sharing?
Yeah.
I am. I don't know if anyone can see that, because I can't.
We can all see it.
Yeah.
So. It looks like the sign would be right about where the 166 is located on the property.
No, it's actually at the corner of Lincoln and Pleasant, there's a, right in that area, landscaped area.
So right, right here. Okay, so that brings it closer to this residential property right here.
That property though is not within the, within the residential district.
How about 12, how about on Pleasant Place over here?
That one maybe.
And so is this one, because this is the one we had the letter from, I believe.
I don't know which one.
The one just adjacent to the one you said was not.
Behind?
Yeah, 36 Pleasant.
Sean, you can turn on the zoning layer if you want to see where the zone line is.
All right.
Over here, Sean.
On the left, go to layers.
Okay. The butter layers, there we go.
Bottom one is.
Did that do, there we go.
Yep.
All right, so it's the ones on, it looks like the ones on Pleasant Place that are the most.
And the ones across the street, the house across the street from that, on Pleasant Street, yes, there.
Here, and how about?
That's a church or something.
That's a church, right?
Yeah.
Right, so it's really just.
If you go further up Pleasant Street.
Up towards Main Street or up towards?
North. The abutter to the north is going to be impacted.
Again, that's a 200 foot district line, so I guess it does go through that property right there.
Yes.
Yeah. Again, and the orientation of that sign is perpendicular to Lincoln Street.
Yeah.
So.
Now is this open 24 hours, is that my understanding, is that what you're trying to do?
No, what we're trying to do is just identify the gasoline prices on the price sign.
I understand that. But we also have to take into consideration that lights are more onerous at nighttime.
Yeah, well, these LED lights have sensors. During the day, when the sunlight is strong, the intensity is increased so that you can see the LED lights. And at nighttime, the sensors decrease the intensity of the LED signs. So not to create, you know, undue glare.
Would it be accurate to say if we walk up Pleasant Place, if we can see? if we can see the facade of the existing sign, that we would be able to see the, the message boards?
I guess you, that would be the case. If you can see the face of, of the existing sign, the LED possibly could be observed.
Right. Any other comments or questions about this? Before you go and take a look see for yourself?
Is there, other than the sign, the LED piece itself, is the sign size in compliant with the current sign ordinance? Is the existing sign as is compliant?
If, if the sign is, the existing sign, uh, I'm not sure if it's a pre-existing non-conforming in terms of height and/or area. Again, what we're looking to do is just to reface the pricing to include that LED, which is the sort of industry standard now for price, uh, price panels.
But that's a very good question, Chris, because if it's a non-conforming sign, then making any changes to it has to come into compliance.
Right.
So we need to find that out.
Madam Chair, did you ever answer if this is going to be 24 hours? I know the LEDs, how it goes up and down, but is this a 24 hour station now?
I don't know, to tell you the truth.
Okay, thank you. And then we also have the issue now, according to our new policy, which I think we've adopted, or maybe we are tonight, that in order to grant the variance, the property would have to otherwise be in compliance, meaning the entire sign package, all uses on the property and refrom blight and so forth. So if I drive out tomorrow and there's an A-frame sign on the property, then you're not entitled to your variance.
I wouldn't say that. I mean, it's then, it's a enforcement issue in terms of taking the sign that's not permitted down.
Well, our policy is, our policy is if the property isn't in compliance, they don't get a variance.
Compliance with, I guess the question is compliance with what? All zoning bylaws and sign bylaws?
Correct.
Uh huh.
So.
Everything.
Everything, let's.
We, we don't want to reward people who don't follow the rule.
Did you want to send a letter to code enforcement to find out what the current situation of the property is, Sean?
I, I think because this is new and we haven't had a chance to talk to them yet, I think it probably would make sense for this one for us to look.
Okay.
Certainly can informally ask, ask if there are any current enforcement actions, but I, other than this, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming that they would have brought it to our attention if there was something other than this variance request.
I'll check on it. Informal. Is there any more questions or comments on this? If none, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Good night. Um, we have correspondence. We have some communication regarding the McGee property.
Could I ask a question before George reads this?
Yeah.
Maybe we could dispense with the reading?
Yes.
Is this for us at all?
No, it's not. So I'm, I'm willing to, you know, not have the public reading. It's just regular correspondence. We can accept and file all correspondence and I'm willing to do that.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Okay. All in favor? Sean's got to go through, or George has to go through his thing here.
And before, sorry.
George, George here?
There's also correspondence within other agenda items that we didn't accept and place on file. So maybe the motion should be to accept and place on file all correspondence that was submitted with our agenda.
Yes, good, okay. Um, George seems to be somewhere.
Hello?
You there, George?
Yeah, I'm, I'm back in on fall. My computer died.
Okay.
They, they seem to like to have full batteries.
All right, can you, uh, would you like to call the, uh, roll for the correspondence?
Absolutely. Mr. Elder.
Yay.
Mr. Elder votes yay. Mr. Fay.
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yay, yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. Laventure being absent will abstain. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Russ votes yes. And Dr. Fendby?
Yes. Okay, um, so we've accepted and filed the correspondence. You did notice that we had some chicken correspondence there? Um, and I'd like to thank Mr. Elder. That was very nice of you, Matt. Matt, are you there?
Yes, I'm, I'm neither confirming nor denying any knowledge on said issue that is in, um, 9B.
I did understand, however, that your address was on the packages that got sent.
No, can, not confirming nor denying.
Very, that was a very clever thing you did, Matt.
Neither confirming nor denying.
Not being very clever tonight. Thank you.
You want to, do you want to let everyone else in on the joke of what you did? Because I don't think everybody knows.
I'd love to, but there's too much background noise, so I'll be on mute. Sorry.
So, so after the last meeting, Matt thought it would be funny to send stuffed chickens to Counselor Robey, Counselor Navin, and President Ossing. So they received some nice chicken stuffed animals from their friends on the planning board.
And you saw Mr. Ossing was showing his, his, uh, his, his lovely chicken, which he said would be accompanying him in the, uh, council chambers. So thank you for everybody. And Matt, that was really a stroke of brilliance on your part. Thank you. Um, let's see, uh, we have the draft policy discussions, the zoning and variance things.
I think it was, I think it was interesting to see the, the reaction to that from an applicant. Like, wait, wait a minute, we have to follow the rules? What is, what does that mean?
That was, that was a bit much.
And I think that's precisely the reaction that we're looking for.
Right, right. All right, there's no further action on that. Let's see.
Do we, we want to know, I mean, it, do we want to confirm that as a policy and notify city council, notify code enforcement that that's our policy?
I'm ready to go. You want to make a motion?
I will make the motion.
Second.
George.
I'm sorry, I was distracted. Who made the motion and who seconded?
I made the motion and Mr. Elder.
All right, Mr. Elder.
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hodge votes yes. And, and this is not anything that changed while I was off the meeting. Okay, so Mr. Laventure votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby?
Yes.
Yeah, Dr. Fendby votes yes.
All right, Sean, can I ask that you work with Krista to make sure we have, you know, that it's the, the correct one we're sending along?
Yes.
Okay, good, because there've been several iterations. Just want to make sure we have the right one.
I think the last person that had comments, I think, was Chris.
Yes.
Chris, did you send out, I can't remember if you sent out a revised, revised language on something or not, but I know you had a comment.
No. Um, it was kind of just pertaining to where exactly the applicants are notified of it. Is it, is it sort of a review checklist item? So when they're, they're filling out their application, they just kind of, here you go to the zoning, the code officials, you have to go out and do my review before we even see it. So they're, they're not showing up like tonight saying, oh, why do we have to do that stuff?
It's already done. You know, I think there might be an easy way to, to, to notify people on that is we can ask code enforcement for the, um, for the variance request. We can ask code enforcement to put in their denial letter, you know, please note that the planning board requires the property be in complete conformance with, uh, city code before granting a variance.
That makes sense.
That actually makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
So this was, um, you look at number six on this application. I, I posed this to the building commissioner and code enforcement. I didn't get their feedback on it. That was where we were proposing to add that confirmation.
Right.
You think it's a full another line item, it wouldn't be like a 6A. I think it's a separate line item.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, to make it more emphatic.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know if the, um, if code enforcement received our requests to review the signs and the parking on the grass at Trombadas?
I don't know. But.
The trucks were gone for three days and I was very excited and then they were back last night.
Since I'm going to be talking to code enforcement, um, um, informally, I will ask.
Have you seen the piles of material that J&amp;J Lawn Care there on Mill Street South has? Stacked upside their buildings?
Oh, yes, yes, I saw that.
That to me seems like something that would be a compliance issue. I, I mean, I'm surprised that stuff on a strong wind is not blowing around.
Where, you said it was on South Street, George?
Uh, uh, um,
Brigham Street, Mill Street.
Brigham Street, Mill Street South.
Mill Street's up, okay. I'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, J&amp;J, he's got like three or four different, huge, I mean, I, you know, I haven't really stopped there, but, but I would say 10 foot piles baked up against, uh, against this building, some up against windows. So yeah, it, it's worth a look.
As long as we're at it, maybe we should let code enforcement know about the pest control company near 495 on Route 20 that has the huge banner attached to their fence. We might as well be consistent.
Ooh, yeah.
You know, we're critical of, of Trombadas for doing it. We need to be critical of everybody for doing it.
Yep.
All right.
Good point.
Is that a request to send a, uh, letter on that one or shall I just do it informally?
I think informally, we're, you know.
Okay, so can you give me better instructions than the big bug?
Big bug? So it is, um, it is, as you're headed west on Route 20, it's on the right-hand side, um, right near the new, the, the newer workforce housing development, I guess, was the, the, those, what is it, Admiral's Way or something like that up on the right?
Ice House Landing.
Ice House Landing, that's it. I was not even close.
Okay. I will, uh, I will discuss it. All right. We had one thing that we had put to the side and that was the waivers for Commonwealth Heights. Would you like to vote on those waivers this evening or would you like to wait until next time or? What's the sense of the meeting here?
We're, we're just, we would just be doing a general polling of the board, non-binding discussion of.
Correct. It's non-binding, just general discussion. People want to do this or not?
I personally would rather wait. I feel like it looks, I know it's just a procedural thing, but I feel it looks bad that we had some residents on the call and then right at the end of the meeting, we discussed it into an informal polling. So it, it doesn't look great from that standpoint, so I'd rather wait personally. I, I don't think it's going to be a huge issue, but doing it at the end of the meeting, an hour after we bring this up, you know, may strike some super anxious neighbors that it isn't, that doesn't look good, just my opinion.
What's the sense of other people?
I, Tom, I think it's up to Tom as to whether or not he, you know, what his timeframe would be if, if, uh, if two weeks without getting a sense of the board would put him behind the eight ball.
Uh, well, so what's our, what's our deadline on this one?
July 24th, which means we have two meetings between the approval decision or decision on the application is due by July 24th. Our meeting is on July 20th.
I, I'm sensitive to Mr. Elder's comment, um, uh, about having had people publicly on the hearing and, and now most likely they're gone. However, are, are we walking into a dangerous area if we're just providing some guidance to the, uh, uh, city engineer so that he can perform the duties that he's been publicly requested to do? Uh, and, and he had publicly asked for some input from us at that point, so that he could do those duties. So I think those individuals, those citizens that were there listening to the call certainly expect us to provide some information, maybe not in the form of a vote, but maybe in the form of a sense of the board, as you put it, uh, to the engineer so that he can do his job. And that would seem to be relatively innocuous and, uh, at, at least, at least to me.
I guess so, um, you know, we're, as we're approaching the deadline, the other option would be to just, we would just, uh, provide comments on the plan that we have as it is. And if, um, if the board decides to deny a waiver, then, you know, that, then they're going back. The drawing board, I guess, on a short clock to try to get back before us, but, um, you know, that we could go that route and just provide you comments on the plans as they are now.
Matt?
Yeah.
Would you feel better?
My question is that the waivers are in favor of changes that we requested, basically.
Yes, they are. Matt, would you feel comfortable if we took a sense of the meeting and then sent a copy of the minutes to the people who had participated from the, from the community?
Yeah, that's fine. This is, like I said, I know this is a more procedural thing, but, you know, when you have anxious neighbors who are, you know, some were very negatively impacted by some of that development to begin with, you know, for us to have a discussion an hour after they leave, they probably are going to think that there's, you know, something going on. So, you know, I, it's up to the board. So I mean, it's, it's really up to the board what they feel if they want to, you know, do an informal poll. It's certainly up to them. And I completely understand, uh, why that's what we probably have to do.
Well, let me just kind of quickly go through it. Sean?
I, I just had a, the only thing that I don't understand, so, I mean, we talked at the last, the last meeting with him about using the moral farms layout and, you know, shortening the cul-de-sac, but the only thing that I don't understand is why. is why he's so intent on putting that short access road out. I don't get that. Do you know why? Is that so important to him, Tom?
Well, the utility easement part, I think, is more important than, than an access going through there. I don't, my understanding is, isn't really that that access way is critical in any way. I think it was part of the original plan and it was, they were going under the assumption that the, our police and fire, or fire especially, would want something like that. So I don't get the impression that that's a make or break item for them.
So you think that's more of the utility issue than the roadway issue?
Yeah, they were showing the proposed driveways in there too, but I think that was more just because it was a more efficient use of the area. The lots are pretty small, so I think it made sense if they were going to have an access through there to use it as driveways also. But I think, like I said, at least my understanding is, is that it's not really a critical item.
I think Scott Weiss actually still on the call if he wants to answer that.
Scott?
Yes, I am here. And, and we can delete the emergency access at the city's desire, whichever way you guys want to go with that.
I don't, I don't think that anyone's suggesting that you delete it, Scott. We're just kind of curious as to why it's, is it advantageous to you in any way to have it, I guess, is the?
No, it's, it's, it's simply as a, well, partially as a leftover from the prior approved plan. There was an emergency access there and a way to mitigate the length of the dead-end road.
That was correct.
I think that's, okay, I get it. I guess, I think that's important to have.
So, you know, we go off of, certainly the fire chief is sort of the determining factor on that. And, and if he doesn't feel the need for it, we don't feel that it must be included either. So it's, it's your call and, and we'll defer to the board and to Tom as to which way you would prefer to see it included or not.
So, Tom, from a snow removal point of view, help or hurt having the access road?
That's not something that we would use. I can't see our guys using that in any way during snow removal operations.
Not for, not for dumpings, and I know that they hate cul-de-sacs.
Right, yeah, I don't think it's in a spot that, those lots are so tight and it's a fairly narrow easement. I don't think it would really be helpful.
All right, so let me just kind of get a sense as to whether people want to talk about the two items of waivers to give a sense of the meeting. George, how do you feel? Do you want to go ahead with this discussion?
Sure.
Sean?
Yes.
Yeah.
Matt?
I do not know.
Yeah, okay. Phil?
Yeah, what's, what's the question again?
Do we want to go ahead and discuss the two waivers so that we can give them a sense of the meeting?
Do we think they need any further discussion? Again, both, both waivers appeared to need to be things that we were basically requesting.
That's true. Chris?
I, I don't have a problem discussing them, but I do agree with Phil.
Does everybody agree with Phil?
Yes.
I do. Sean?
I'm sorry, I had to step out for 30 seconds. What was the, which one are we talking about?
Sean, Phil had said that he doesn't see why there's a need for any further discussion or to give a sense of the meeting since these are items that we had requested, so.
We, so it just, I just want to make, so we requested the shorter cul-de-sac. We were looking for alternative B and the Morrow Farm layout.
Yeah, right. And so everybody said, yeah, that's what we asked for, so.
That sounds fine to me.
Okay, so that's the best you're going to get for a sense of the meeting? Okay? All right.
Can I just mention one other thing about this? I mean, we're, this is our first, I believe, this is our first public hearing on a full subdivision and decision since Don left.
Yes.
So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have to, in, you know, Don sort of took control of things and did a lot of drafting for developers. We're, we're really going to have to rely on developers and their council to do that work that he used to do, that he wasn't supposed to do.
Yes, I agree.
We can't have things, we can't have things like the final version of what conservation is asking for slipping through the cracks.
Good point. Good point. And so perhaps we should put that to them at the next meeting on the 22nd. So that those items that we expect them to pull together, they're clear about. All right. Let's see, is there anything else? Public notices? Hope you do accept and file.
Some of them.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby?
Yes.
Dr. Fendby votes yes.
Okay, and if there's nothing else, then Matt, did you want to make a motion to end the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
For a second.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Elder votes yes. Mr. Fay?
Yes.
Mr. Fay votes yes. Mr. Hodge?
Yes.
Mr. Hodge votes yes. Mr. LaVenture enthusiastically votes yes. Mr. Russ?
Yes.
Mr. Russ votes yes. Dr. Fendby?
Yes.
All right, Dr. Fendby votes yes.
Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it. It's been a long meeting and you hung in there. Thank you.
Nobody got mad at us today. I said, nobody got mad at us today. This is good.
That, well, that we know of, that we know of.
Tomorrow morning.
I'm mad at the chicken situation, but I'll.